Well, good evening and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting, Thursday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-five. And we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in our nation. How could God and the people of this little league of justice go wrong? Okay, can we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
We do, we have one for the board, for the committee. We're going to add, under new business, we're going to add an eight point four, please. And eight point four's title will be to hire a second kindergarten teacher.
Do we have any comments from our public tonight? Quiet public? Well, um, the school committee wanted to let me know that we are so proud of our O M team. And could the O M team come right up here? We are so proud of you guys that you're going all the way to Michigan. And we know you've been raising funds and all of the school committee members want to present you with a check for five hundred dollars to go on to a jet truck. We're so proud of you guys. Like, you guys are gonna kill it.
We're very excited, aren't we?
Yeah.
What are you most excited for?
Seeing the D P unit in action.
Going to Fordham.
You can eat buffet, so that's what I'm saying.
We get to eat in the dining halls and all their meals are already paid for upfront. So they're very excited for the free food. So for fundraising, we have just hit, it is, I just looked at it today, it's six thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. But yeah, so that is where we've hit for fundraising so far. And now with this, it'll be a little bit higher. So thank you, guys.
I just wanted to tell you that your organization's skills were outstanding. You're, you're the reason this all worked out as well as it did. So congratulations, kudos to you.
Thank you. I've had help, so I can't take all the credit, but. I am, I must say, that is very true.
Guys, have so much fun. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming, thank you for taking the travel.
I also wanted, on behalf of the school committee, I wanted to express our appreciation. I guess Teacher Appreciation Week this week. And we wanted to express our appreciation for all the teachers and staff here. And how act elementary for all they did for our kids and for their dedication. And for all the things that they do that make Acton Elementary School so special. So thank you, teachers, we do what we do.
Yours?
Well, so now we're on to number three, which is Celebration of Learning. And these are the case of teachers, why don't you have a presentation for us?
Where do you want me?
Oh, that, that's fine.
Wherever you want to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so my name's Audrey Taskaski, I know most of you, familiar faces. This is my second, well, finishing up my second year here at Acton Elementary School. I can't say enough good things about this tight-knit community, and it's been wonderful. I wanted to put some things together and sort of celebrate P E and some health in here and talk about things we've been doing this year. There's so much more to add to the list. I narrowed in on a few things we're working on, but it just, the list is endless that we've covered over the past two years that I've been here. Um, standard one, we looked at having the skills and confidence to move and play. Um, we played so many activities, so many games. Um, a few of them we did recently. Um, like, the kids love this game called Boom City. We worked on throwing and receiving, feed the monster with the little kids, adding fun elements, um, and, you know, disguising the skills in there. And they did fun, but they're still learning the skills that they need to, to be active and learn how to throw right. Um, manipulative skills, uh, we do plenty of these throughout the school year. Jump rope has been a favorite of many. I'm sure some of you have heard about it, my ninja jump ropes that we do with the contest involved in that. Um, and for fourth and fifth grade this year, they really enjoy creating their own routines. We work with Chinese jump ropes and long ropes. They even had this mentor doing some double dutch out there. And that was so fun. Um, and just to hear, you know, all the good things and, and going back to the basics. Because I feel like a lot of, a lot of students don't even know the old jump rope anymore. So we did a lot of that. Here's a little video they wanted to share. See if it'll fly. They've gotten really good over this past year. All right, um, standard two, using your knowledge to strategize, be critically, and play smart during games and activities. So I saw this a lot this year with my older kids, playing things like kickball and flag football. Um, using some strategies in the game, kicking of offense, defense, where they would place their bodies. Um, it looks different for different games we play, but I feel like most of them grasp the concept of that um, on many levels. We're still working on it as we, um, as we get out more at, um, in the field area. Um, as it gets warmer, we did a lot of it in the fall. Um, so standard three, we look at an active and healthy lifestyle, how they stay fit. Um, I look at, uh, like lifelong sports, things they could do, um, and stay active throughout their, throughout their existence. And we talked about this a lot because sometimes it's pickleball, sometimes it's volleyball. So this year we got to use the volleyball poles. Um, and we used it a lot with the older kids, and they really, really loved it. It's great to have those come out again this year, because I don't think they were, I don't think it was an element in previous years, but it's great that we were able to use this space. Um, and the volleyball team also used it for their, their team. Um, but they really get into it and, you know, it's something they can, they can play later on in life if they chose to. Um, so standard four, we did a lot of sledding. It was great to use the sledding hill this year. And they used to, you know, take turns, respect classmates, going up and down the hill, learning all about that. Um, we played a game called Rescue, where they had to use some team building aspects. They had to get from one point to the other. Um, I don't do it just with the littles, but we do it with the older kids too. It's a game called River Crossing. They really enjoy it. I add different elements to make it harder and, um, different elements, sort of like a Survivor game thing. And honestly, they don't even know what skills they're working on. They're just having a blast, and they're having so much fun doing it. Um, so this year, we really did some heart health stuff, um, understanding why it's important. So we had some stethoscopes that I was fortunate enough to, to borrow from colleagues here. Um, they listened to their own heart beats, they did some running. Um, we also did, uh, nutrition, so we did MyPlate. Um, we did a lot of elements of that. We worked it into fun games, we worked it into coloring pages and some stations, which was really great. I don't have pictures of that, unfortunately. But it's always a fun thing to learn about what kind of foods are good for our body um, and things that make us perform better. All right, let's see if this will play. So with my, um, youngers last week in pre-K, we played this game called Couch Potato Tag. And I thought it would be fun, it's a silly word, couch potato. And I thought it would be fun to ask pre-K what they thought a couch potato was.
Oh, he built stuff on the house, so whatever he wants to do, he is supposed to come running, and then it comes to him.
Oh, okay. All right, Eli, what is a couch potato? What do you think of this? Happy birthday, Julia. Oh, you are? All right, Eli, do you know what a couch potato is, or do you want to pass? Okay. All right, anyone, what's a couch potato? It's a house and a couch, okay. Oliver, what's a couch potato? And what's what? Oh, wait, wait, okay. All right, crew, what do you think? Do you have a question? Oh, it is? That's awesome. All right, Jack, what do you think a couch potato is? Zero boys. Yeah, that's what you think it is? All right, I'm gonna take one more. Um, Audrey, what's a couch potato? Yeah, sure. Okay, now it's. Okay, um, so basically, the game was about, um, you know, why our bodies are not meant to sit on the couch all day. We're meant to move, and our bodies are meant to move. And that, that was the whole part of the game, the lesson that we talked about. It was really silly, though, to hear what they thought it was. Um, and Ms. Tucker was behind me, and she happened to record it. So I wanted to play the clip and share it with you. Um, because sometimes it's silly questions like that, and I love to hear, and I love to, you know, discuss things, even with pre-K. All right. And I think that's it. That's all I have. Um, any questions for me on other things that I'm working on, or things that I, I really have had a good time here in Acton? And I, um, every day is something new. We, we are doing so many new things. Um, I learn a lot with the students every day. And, um, yeah, I can't say enough good things.
I like the games that you were mentioning in the middle, like, um, for, that are traditional. You know, for the kids that maybe aren't into traditional sports.
Yeah.
So you have those little games of, you know, river crossing to, to get them moving, but they don't realize.
They don't really realize it.
Actually exercising, you know, moving around.
I think one of them that I forgot to mention was the one mile run that we do. So with the older kids, it's a very, um, something they look forward to every year. Um, it starts fourth, fourth grade. They have the option to choose either a half mile or the full mile. A lot of them this year really wanted to try the full mile. They have the course all outlined out there, and it's really great to see how many of them just, you know, they, they just go all out for it, and it's great. I have like the leaderboard wall that we keep track of, and yeah, it's, it's really awesome to see that.
Some of the sixth graders have taken it very, very seriously.
Yes.
And have been in training.
Oh, they have?
Yeah.
Oh, nice. Well, that's great to hear.
Yeah.
I love to hear that. I, I usually, I like to give them a little bit of a warning.
Yeah.
You know, a few weeks' notice.
Because of the rain, they were, they were disappointed about that, so.
Yes. Yeah.
Can't wait to do it then.
Yeah, well, hopefully next week, fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Audrey. Great presentation.
That's great. It's great to see what happens, because we don't get to, you know, visit in these classes and see all the things that are happening. And it's great to see the differentials between the littles and the bigger, and the bigger kids. That's one of the challenges with a K to eight school. You know, you have them all, but you get to watch them grow and develop too.
Definitely.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
I like the jump rope.
Jeanette wants to try, she said.
You can visit anytime.
We'll do it on camera next time.
I can tell you that I don't think the school committee will be doing that one by one. Pretty sure. Okay, let's move on now to, um, progress monitoring with Mr. Ward.
All right, I'm also gonna grab the projector. Andy, do you wish mine?
Sure.
We gotta watch the end.
I, I think it'd be good. Is it on somewhere? Can I grab them? Yeah. Okay, I don't see it. No, I do.
Thank you, Andy. So during the process, a committee member suggested that we make more public some of the student achievement data uh, over the course of the year. And so in the last couple of months, I put together this presentation that also is going to live on our website, so it'll be accessible to the public. It talks about the standardized testing that takes place here at the school, both state and national comparison, as well as our local assessment, i Ready. And the data and how it compares to state and national figures. Some of this information you've all seen before already from earlier presentations, some of it might be a little bit new. And I try to keep everything fairly concise, um, because if you start talking about the student achievement data, it's, well, it's good for helping you sleep at night. So to start with, achievements that we take, there are state assessments. You had N W B A in the May through the year. These assess the common core state standards for reading and math. Students take this in grades three through eight and third year of high school. They're given online, uh, twice a year. The fall is when we do the N W B A. And spring, which we are currently taking this week, is the May through the year. The N W B A results are available in December. The spring results that we're taking now are to be determined. We can get some of those results fairly quickly, like we can get student grade scores. We don't get the full picture of the student performance until, like, the end of July. Um, so the fall N W B A scores, those are compared to other grade level students nationally. So that does compare how our students achieve against other students across the country that take the same exam. And then the spring, May through the year, it uses national norms, but it only scores our students against the state expectations. So when you see those scores, it's only compared to other students in the state and main, the same curriculum. Main science assessment, which we will be taking in another week or two. Uh, test students in grades five and eight, as well as third year of high school. Again, it's online. Testing window is now in the spring. Result availability is to be determined. Um, and this assesses the main science adhering standards through the N G E S S, which is what most states have adopted across the country. So these scores compare to other grade level students in the state and main, and they're again scored against the state expectation, not a national average. Then we have our local assessment, uh, i Ready. It's a diagnostic that students take three times a year. Um, it is aligned with our reading and math curriculum that we already have in place. We're reading page six, and math is taken rate. Um, it does compare results nationally, but it does it in a very different way. Um, it provides national percentile ranking. It will compare our students' performance against other students in the U.S. who also take the diagnostic. And then when the students complete it, they get a couple of pieces of information. They get a scale score, which will be a number of four hundred and eight hundred, specific to their grade. And then they get a percentile rank, and that's based on the national norms. That will tell a student where they stand against other students across the country in the same curriculum. So the example I gave, you're a third grader who scores the seventy-fifth percentile, which means they're doing better or above seventy-five percent of other U.S. third graders in that i Ready gap. Um, and then this comes, these norms are derived from a sample of all students that use i Ready, which according to their recent numbers, is about ten million students across the country. So it does only compare against those who use the same curriculum and testing. Um, report, in terms of what teachers and parents see, you can see the overall percentile of your students' national standing. And it'll also show growth targets and how they're doing in relation to typical performance in their group. So some of the examples of what these look like. So the state assessment for the fall, this is the N W B A scores that we did this fall. The yellow circle number is the percentile that indicates where the middle score is of all students and how it compares against the national middle score. So a number, a yellow circle number below fifty indicates that our middle student achievement is in relation to the middle student across the whole country. So this top graph here is for math. For growth, you can see that our middle students scored the forty-sixth percentile to be lower than the national middle student. For achievement last year, twenty twenty-three, it was the forty-seventh percentile. This year was forty-sixth. For reading, growth shows forty-eight. Achievement from twenty twenty-three is forty-six, and achievement for this year was fifty-first. So you can see that we're kind of hovering right around where the average U.S. student is takes the N W B A. State assessment for science, I've shared this data previously, uh, and then my little blurb here about where to find the information you want. Overall average scale score compares us to other students across the state, same. So we're on average in fifth grade with every other fifth grader across the state. At eighth grade, they actually score higher. So our eighth graders are scoring higher in science, um, by three points in the scale score, which is actually fairly significant when you're talking about this small sample size. Our eighth grader is outperforming the students across the state in science. Main through the year, this is last year's data. We won't have this year's until sometime in the middle of summer. These are really challenging to kind of look at. Best way to compare how our students do against the state, you want to check the grade, the content, and adjust this average score line is the easiest one. So fifty-one here is an example. In fifth grade, the state in math, the average score is fifteen oh one. You're in Acton, fifteen oh one. So our average is the same as the state. Uh, an example of where we might be scoring a tiny bit lower. Seventh grade, reading, average score in the state was fifteen oh seven. Our seventh graders scored fifteen oh four, so we are slightly below. And then on the flip side, in eighth grade, we are actually significantly higher again, from fifteen oh five to fifteen oh ten. But because our population is so small, this is gonna fluctuate a lot for us. This is something where we would want to tread, check trends over time to see if we're actually closing the gap or increasing gains as we go year to year. Problem that comes up with this type of state assessment is they tend to change every three, four, or five years. To just reach a point where you're going to be able to have that trend, the state will oftentimes be switching to a new format or a new test, and then you have to start all over. So there is some challenges with trying to, but it gives you kind of overall picture of we're right around the state average. So i Ready diagnostic, um, this is our mid-year results. You have actually seen this before too. Um, the example I gave here is you wanted to check the typical growth bar, and it shows you how your students are growing compared to average students across the United States. So here, we have math, score fifty-six percent means that our students are actually growing more in math compared to grade level peers across the U.S., like just a little bit. And then the big game, which I remember talking about a couple of months ago, was in reading, with eighty-four percent growth, because our students in reading are growing significantly faster than reading than other students using the i Ready platform across the country. Uh, i Ready is in the middle of a longitudinal study where they're tracking the same cohort of students for multiple years. They only currently have a three-year sample, grades one through three. And so this allows us to compare how our students who have stayed in this program for three years compare to other students across the country that have also been in the program for three years. Here are the national numbers, here are our, our numbers. So the big takeaway I might see in this chart is that the number of students who are at or above grade level or early on the grade level, you do have fewer or lower percentage of students that are at that point. But when it comes to students that are two or three grade levels below, you can see that our number is three percent, and they are twenty and twenty-three percent. So we have fewer students that are well below grade, not quite as many who are achieving highly. Uh, that's for math. And then on reading, these numbers are actually really outstanding. You can see that our lead or above grade level is at least comparable, though it is actually, I think, almost uncarved in the national norm, and slightly ahead of the national year-to-date. And then again, the big takeaway here is we don't have a single student over this three-year study that was two or more grade levels behind, whereas across the country, both of those numbers are over twenty percent of their students. So that would be my takeaway from, from this type of graph. Um, and then the last one I think I have to show is achievement results. The easiest way to look at this is we have our score, what the average or fifty percentile national score is, and where that would put our percentile. So in kindergarten, seventies percentile, we are far outperforming the national norm in kindergarten. Anything over fifty percent means you're outperforming. You can see that in reading, only fifth and sixth are lower. Occasional four, we're all above, including well above in kindergarten, second grade. And in math, we have a couple more, so second forty-four percentile, fifth thirty-four, forty-nine, pretty much right there on even. And then again, our kindergartners are outperforming, and so are a couple of our employees. So I found this perhaps to be the most helpful and easiest kind of graph to look at um, when trying to prepare our students against the national average. And then the end-of-year growth results for i Ready will be available until early June. But when those are done, I will plug in a similar graph in here. Like I said, I've asked Mr. Calder to put this on our, our website, so it'll be available to anybody in the public. Here's the screen.
So a lot of information there.
Not yet.
It really looks like we're doing something right with reading.
I would concur. I think overall our grade scores, especially at the elementary level, aren't showing a lot of positive.
But it looks like we probably do a little more in math to bump it up to the same level that we're at currently.
So one thing that I would also want to identify, I may have spoken earlier in the year about this as well, is because we have a kind of one program that focuses on reading, our students at the elementary level are getting very targeted and specific reading interventions, and then maybe reading intervention. If we're ever seeing an extra money, a math intervention at the elementary level would be something that would probably have a lot of benefit.
And we did try that, and then COVID kind of threw it into.
As, as it did for many of them.
Yeah, but, so that was something that we had planned, you know, planned to do.
So we have a very consistent curriculum now at those elementary grades. I Ready provides the curriculum for both math and reading. Um, and I think, Alex sitting over there too, I've seen the growth that her kids have made in the i Ready diagnostic at the middle school level, it's been really tremendous. So I don't think it's necessarily a curriculum issue. But the only other piece that I can point to without really digging in a lot more is that we do have a target intervention for reading, but we currently do not do that.
And that makes sense.
But one nice thing about the i Ready is that it shows exactly what the kids need in math, right?
It does.
The skills that they're lacking and the skills that they need to work on.
You're absolutely correct. It identifies that with the teachers, it helps create a plan for how they can start to close those gaps. And then it's just a matter of finding the time for teachers to work with them in small groups to do it on top of the regular curriculum piece.
Thank you so much, that's great.
You're welcome.
Another note would be the kindergarten, um, scales. That we're doing very, very well with first teaching in kindergarten, from pre-K to kindergarten, it's obvious.
Yeah.
So, that's great.
All right, anybody else have anything? Okay, Ben, thank you, Mr. Ward. And we'll move on now to number five, and I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda. Moved and seconded. Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, going on to number six. Do you have any questions for any of the reports in your packet that your chair sent out?
I only wanted to, um, thank Brandon for taking up the principal's climate and culture committee.
Yes.
And, and doing that work this year. You mentioned it in your report, and so I wanted to point that out. Thank you.
We've just had our, our final meeting to try and plan out what, in the end of the year, kind of recognition and celebration will look like. Very pleasant to think about.
Yes, it's great to see that coming along. Looks like you've had some fun activities, too.
I think so. But I have a somewhat twisted sense of humor. I think they, I think it has been well received. I think folks are appreciative of the time to collaborate and be with their colleagues in a setting where it's a little bit more relaxed and we're able to do things that are within the school community and not. are within the school community and not always focused on the academics and achievement piece as important as that is. We also love to connect as people and humans. I think people appreciate that time.
Right, that's great, thank you.
What I had heard also, Brandon, was that the difference between the early elementary and the middle school, they're getting to know each other. It's hard, everybody's working full bore all the time, and those activities gave them a chance to get to know each other.
It's nice to connect with folks outside of our circle.
All right, any other questions about any of the administrators' reports? Sharon, it looks like our comp is staying pretty steady in special ed, correct?
Yeah, we lose them and then they move in again. Because it's funny, I was doing my, working on my exit report today, and we actually exited twenty-one kids this year.
Wow.
But for some reason, our numbers haven't really grown that much, but...
Yeah, but they stay pretty steady.
Last year we exited three kids, and this year twenty-one, so it's significant. So I think that's a good thing that we exit kids because we're doing our job, that's the goal.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's good. Anybody else, anything for any of the administrators? All right, then I'll go on to the superintendent's report.
Very good, thank you. First thing I'd like to do is welcome Sharon back. My roommate's back in my front office, it's great. Really nice to have Sharon back with us in person, and of course, it's not like Sharon was away, she was working diligently and all the time remotely, but to have her in person makes my life a little more fun in the office, we'll just leave it at that. Many thanks to the PTG, let me read something for what they've done. So I mentioned to Brandon, I said, I don't know what they did in your district and/or how you did this, but our teacher appreciation, or staff appreciation is what we like to call it here, has always been fantastic. And the flyer that I've received for what has happened up till and then there's tomorrow still, Teacher Appreciation Week for 2025, Nacho Average Teacher Monday. Nacho Ordinary Teachers Deserve Extraordinary Snacks. Dip Into Appreciation With Chips And Salsa In The Lounges. Happy Cinco de Mayo. Toasty Tuesday. Toasty Treats For The Teachers Who Warm Our Hearts. Enjoy A Muffin, A Bagel, And Smores In The Teacher's Lounge. Happy Trails Wednesday. You Make Every Path Brighter. Trailblazer. Trail Mix Your Way Till A Great Day. Customize Your Snack And Enjoy The Adventure. You Are Mint Thursday. Minty Goodness For Mint Conditioned Teachers. You're Mint To Inspire. Treat Yourself To Some Minty Sweet Treats. Tomorrow Is A Step Above The Rest Friday. You're A Step Above The Rest. Enjoy A Special Gift In Your Mailbox. We'll look forward to that tomorrow. At the bottom it says, "We appreciate all you do to inspire and educate our children. Your hard work and commitment do not go unnoticed, thank you." So you've seen the outside grounds, and you've seen some things very, very special. They really do take care of us, and we thank them very, very much for that.
Nobody hijacked the board outside this year.
It's funny though, because they put up a ribbon that the wind was blowing, the wind was blowing, and it just happened to keep catching my eye off my window, and I'm like, who's that kid out there, what's going on? And I realized my peripheral vision is very good. Couple other things, oh, before I pass this out, you know of the emergency management plan that was in place? Phil Caruso had a committee, I was on that committee. It was voted in at the town meeting, and since then, there was really a more of a boots-on-the-ground, you know, what does it mean to be a Red Cross shelter? And I couldn't make that meeting, so Andy went, because Andy and I have been tag teaming this whole thing, so he represented the school at that. So maybe you can just give a quick overview of what happened on Tuesday with you in regards to Red Cross, that'd be great.
Philip invited us up Tuesday night to the training session at the town hall, and I wasn't really sure what to expect, so I showed up, it started at six o'clock, and I'm like, I'll kind of slide in at like ten minutes of six and kind of scope this out, and the place was full. And the only seat left was right in the front door. If you check it out on the town website, there's Andy front and center at the training session. But Phil has done a really exceptional job with this, the emergency planning, and some of the situations that have come up in Acton in the past were discussed, like the ice storm of ninety-eight, the Patriots Day storm, and even the snowstorm back in April last year that, you know, there were a lot of residents without power. But right from the beginning, Phil contacted us, we helped him update all the Red Cross shelter plan with the school. Acton has been very supportive of the school, and the infrastructure that we have in place here is ideal for a shelter. A lot of schools just don't have what we do. And the training session was really good, there was some, we divided into two teams, talked about what the scenario would look like as far as staff goes and how, what that looks like. And all I can say is that there are a lot of people that are very interested in this, and they are doing a top-shelf job with it. And I am now a certified Red Cross operator or trainee or whatever. There's some other additional trainings that I may take if Phil offers them, but it was a good opportunity, and it was nice. Well done by Phil and the representatives from EMA, so that was it.
I think awesome, we finally have something in place, which we haven't had for so long. I mean, it's been a check on this one and check on that one, and we've done it, you know, person to person and through the town hall and whatever, but to have a really, really good plan in place is...
And one of the things too that came up, that kind of struck me is, you know, since, you know, we were registered as a Red Cross shelter before Phil took it over, but as he updated things and kind of dug into it a little bit deeper, usually like if there's an emergency, the Red Cross will take all of their resources and pull them to like Sanford. So if the shelter opens up in Sanford, that's great for Sanford residents, but residents in Acton may not always have a way to get there. So they're trying to get away from that more and get the facility and the shelter available at a more local level. So that's part of the effort, and like I said, it's moving in the right direction.
We wouldn't be able to do this without that generator. I mean, that generator could light up, it'd probably be half the town. And we can run off that for a long, long time, so it's really, really important for the community to have that in place.
Excellent. So I too think you've got a good price on our oil for next year.
That would be, thank you to Paula's efforts.
Thank you, Paula. Good job.
And we went in with Sanford, I guess, this year. They actually were going to the new company, Renalvi Energy.
The next thing I'm doing, I'm just handing out, we traditionally after April break always provide the staff everything that's going on for the rest of the year, because it's a busy, busy time from April break till eighth grade graduation. I'm not going to go over every one of these, because this is kind of an internal document, but I want to use it to inform the public of some of the public events. So I highlighted, I'm not going to even really start at the beginning, I'm going to pick right up with, on Thursday, May fifteenth, at six PM, we have the fourth and fifth grade spring concert here at the school, right here in the gym. Thursday, May twenty-second is the literacy fair, and that's pre-K through grades four. It starts a little bit earlier this year, it goes five to six-thirty. That's a little earlier start, a little earlier end for our literacy fair. That was always Rachel's thing, and Chad's taking it over, and I'm sure it'll be a fantastic night for everybody. Friday, May twenty-third, the Drama Club. Now, this is Assembly, but Assembly is open to the public, so the Drama Club, it has a play, and it starts at one forty-five on the twenty-third. And if you flip over, you'll see June third is our senior walkthrough, and it might be a little different this year, I will definitely keep the school committee apprised to what time, but all they've said now is noon to early afternoon. It was usually, it used to be always in the morning. There's some new leadership, and there's some reasons for that with transportation, so as I get that information, I will share that with you in my weekly update. And then, of course, Tuesday, June tenth, at six PM will be the eighth grade graduation here in the gymnasium, which is always an excellent event. And that's it for my report.
Any questions from anybody?
How did pre-K here, who's screening to go?
Yes, that was today. Yeah, it was really the, I think that's why, everybody was, Paula's why, everybody who saw these little kids, I mean, they're so little when they show up, three, four months before school starts. They're three, a lot of them are three. And I think we only, I didn't see every child, but we had one that was a Klingon, but other than that, most of them were like, okay, and they'd go with Mrs. Crawford, and they'd go with Mrs. LeVine, and okay, which is rare. Usually we have a half dozen Klingons. This year, not so much. And the mom warned me, we had a pre-K parent night that I was at, but she said, because I said to him, you can go get a cup of coffee, we'll take your phone number, and it's about forty-five minutes to an hour, and we'll call you if we need you, but don't go far. You don't have to sit in your car, and you don't have to sit in the school. She goes, oh, no. She was right. She was the only one. She told me, she goes, no, it's not going to work that way. But her daughter came around and was able to be screened, and she's going to be just
All right, and let's go on to number seven, committee reports. And the policy committee gave us some things to look at tonight.
So the first one, we revised that based on, similar question from Brandon, right? To emphasize more of the effort that student athletes put in in the classroom, rather than solely focusing on the grades that they get. So if they're trying their best and still not quite getting the grades that they're supposed to, they take that into account rather than just the grade itself. But it also is the opposite, where if they're kind of being a teenager in class, but getting the right grades, they can kind of be held accountable for their attitudes and their efforts in the classrooms, as opposed to getting an A but being a jerk about it. So it kind of takes on both sides of that. So that was, almost a good chunk of it was updated to reflect that. And then we had a couple of first reads that are mandatory from the state. And then two second reads that carried over from the last month. And then the last one, we looked at, and this came out of the contract negotiations. So we decided to update the main office secretary position to now be the office, the main office coordinator, and to have that better reflect what actually happens in the
All right, so I'll look for a motion to accept, let's see, just one revised?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so I make a motion to accept I-G-D-J-R, After School Sports Activities/Rules As Revised.
One second there. Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
I make a motion to accept J-F-A-B-D, Education Of Homeless Students. J-F-C, Dropout Prevention And Student Withdrawal From School. J-R-A-R, Student Education Records And Information Administrative Procedure For A First Read.
Moved by CJ, seconded by Jeanette, all in favor?
And I make a motion to accept I-L-D, Education Research, Student Submission To Surveys, Analysis Or Evaluation. And I-M-B-V, Exemption From Required Instruction, both for a second read.
One second there. All in favor?
And I make a motion to approve the office coordinator job description.
Any discussion? All in favor? Removed. Good work, policy committee. Thank you. All right, let's go on to Long Range Planning, which also met this one.
Yes, we met just before this meeting. We have three basic updates. The fifty thousand dollar technology, I can't think of the word I want to say, because you have it, the town, the town voted for it and approved. Matt has plans for that, for the server update, firewall, and the server room, which needs to be reconfigured to help reduce the heat. I think some consulting fees might be in there as well, but he has his plans for that, and hopefully all of that will happen over the summer. The technology grant that he applied for is still outstanding, that goes until the end of September, so we won't hear anything for a while on that. Andy gave us an update on the sidewalks that is happening this summer. It's Pat Stevens that's doing it, the work, and the railings are being built by somebody else, correct?
Correct, yep.
So it'll be the total removal out front and out back.
Yes.
And there's a plan for when summer school is happening, for other entrances to use, and signs to be put up for, you know, blockages for safety. Yeah, and then we did want to mention that we're still having some issues with that boiler, we had another part that's leaking, so we're doing some more research on that, seeing how far we can maybe push back towards the manufacturer to find out what's really going on with the whole thing. And that's it? Tree removal, ash tree removal, that happened this summer too.
Just mentioned that there were a number of trees this summer that will be removed on the grounds, just a lot of ash trees that are dying off, and kind of the other day, like nine trees, and the yellow ones got a middle leaf as long as we can. Our staff is just showing the same signs, so...
Have you seen the ash borer going through, is that what's killing the trees off?
You can see them, and what happens is with the ash trees, and you might notice them on the way out, is you'll start seeing like, the tree starts to die off, and it looks like the bark is peeling off, and then you'll see like sections of the ash tree where the buds don't come back, some limbs do come back, and eventually none of them come back.
I think that's been moving across the state.
It has, it's been in the works for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah.
I knew it was happening, but now we're really starting to see it, you know, come full circle. It's going to look different.
Don't they advocate not burning that wood?
I don't know, I hope not, because I have been.
They don't want you to move it.
Right.
Can't take it across state lines.
You can take it across state far, yeah.
Well, they don't like to move a gap, yeah, either, right?
Right, yeah.
You just drop it and it just stays there.
Whatever's in it, local, though.
Right, doesn't go downtown.
Right, yeah.
One final thing about having everything blocked off for the summer, I want to make sure that the community knows that with summer school and everything, that there will be clear signage, so they'll know, you'll know where to bring your kids, how to get them to where they're going, all of that, and as far as mail delivery, package delivery, that will all be signed, there's a plan, so fear not.
All right, we'll set with Long Range.
Yep.
All right, then, let's move on to number eight, new visits. And number eight one is the support staff contract, and I'll let the negotiators talk about that.
Do you want to go ahead? So Paula has the signed contract in her hot little hands, so we'll give you the rundown for the support staff, what we negotiated. First off was updating the secretary job description, so that it accurately reflected the position. And the pay for that is also being updated, it's going to be somewhere between EdTech two and EdTech three. The EdTechs currently receive a twenty-five dollar stipend or bonus to substitute as a teacher, and we added that as well for if they had to substitute in the front office. The sick bank was closed to donations because it was so large, but the committee can still need to go over it if somebody needs to access it. We updated the way that course reimbursement can be done to match what the teachers can also do. And the medical contribution from the school is going to match what we did with the teachers, it's going to be eighty-two percent in the first year, eighty-one... It's going to be 82% in the first year, 81% in the second year, and 80% in the third. When we got to the pay scale, we removed five steps from the pay scale. So it went from 30 down to 25. We added two longevity bonuses. So 25 to 29 years, you have to have worked in the school for at least five years. You get $300 longevity pay. And anyone over 30 years of service, get a $500 longevity pay. So the EdTech base had to be set by a state law at 125% of minimum wage, which worked out to 1831. For year one, we added 34 cents to that base, which is like 1.8% above. So the EdTech base one for, for the first year of the contract will be 1865, and that covers the cafe worker as well. EdTech 2 base is going to be $20.02, and that covers custodians. And EdTech 3 base will be $22.75. So for year one, between each step on the scale, there's a 31 cent raise. Years two and three, that has been moved up to 35 cents between steps. Year two, we added 85 cents to the base, so that's about 4.5% increase. And year three, we added 50 cents to the base, which is about 2.5%. So that's summary of all of that.
Nice work.
Yeah. Do we need to vote to?
Yes, 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 we do. I was just, I was just going to say, the support staff negotiating is a little more difficult because you have so many different jobs.
Yeah.
With the, with the staff, everybody, the staff is the staff. And they can decide on the salary and the base and insurance and all those things. But with the support staff, you have so many other little innuendo things that you have to deal with because of positions, different positions and that.
Right.
Yeah, thank you both for working on that. You did a great job. And I will look for a motion to approve the support staff contract.
I make a motion that we approve the support staff contract. Second class?
We've been seconded. All in favor? Great. Okay, now Paula has something for us under paid family medical leave.
Yes, my favorite question. So MSMA has been approved, they've been approved to allow to do a private plan. They went to an RFP, to find an insurance company that will do the paid family medical leave privately. And it's been approved by the state. So they, they took that, we all submitted our wages. So they came back and they, the company has been, it's called Guardian. It will be a little cheaper. And the main benefit, besides being a little cheaper, is that I'll have a contact to work with. Where it's the state, it'd be a little more difficult. So I'll have a person that I can call if we have questions or need to work with them. And the other benefit is that it won't start until May of 2026 deductions.
Okay.
So, because right now I've already started deductions for non-contract people. So if we do decide to go along with this and voting, if you ever voted in, I'll refund the people that I have to give the deduction to. And so this is May 26th for everyone, not just the teaching, the teachers. So.
So all schools will be going through this?
Quite a few. There will be, because I belong to a finance group that just about everyone is going with it. It's just that the, having the one-on-one contact, there's going to be so many questions. You know, if it still goes through, it's still kind of up in the air, so things changing every day. So MSMA, they went ahead and did this and, I'm kidding. I didn't run into anyone that's not going to do it. Like I said, it'll be a little bit cheaper. It's a 1%, it's like 0.98%. But the real benefit is we don't have to start until May 26th. And it does need school board approval.
Okay.
What would the motion be that you need? Kind of like, what's the legality of the motion? What's the essence of it?
They said, I should have piloted it though. Just to confirm, the district school board committee voted and purchased this coverage from Guardian Insurance Company.
From Guardian Insurance. So somebody, I'll look for a motion to accept Paula's recommendation to approve our insurance.
Paid family medical.
Paid, paid family medical leave insurance through Guardian Insurance Company.
One second there. Terri made the motion.
Okay, Terri did, okay.
Jeanette seconded. For Jennifer who's watching the video to take notes.
All, all in favor? Thank you Paula.
Thank you Paula.
Okay, now we need to discuss our, eight three, we need to discuss our June school committee meeting. Our June school committee meeting would actually come after the close of school, because school gets out a little early this year. So our meeting would come after that. So we can do a couple of things. One thing we could do is change our meeting time if we wanted to. We could meet in the morning, in the daytime sometime. We know what a night out will be. What, and we could, we could make that also a workshop meeting, if you wanted to do that. If we wanted to make it a workshop meeting. And then we could skip, skip meeting in July. And then go to our August meeting and have our election of offices and everything at the August meeting after June, June 11th this morning. What do you, what's your, what's your, is that the 12?
It would be. School gets out on the 10.
Right.
Would be 11th.
My concern is that I have a granddaughter graduating that night in Waterville. So I would not be here that evening. Yeah, you mean the 12?
But if we were to meet in the morning?
Yes, I could be here, yes. And it's really all about me, when you think about it.
11th is the last day of school. We could do it, but I think I'll be 11.
Yeah.
Now, let's just stick to that, stick to our date. And you want to put, you want to go at 9 o'clock?
We'll do 9.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
We'll build the, I'll work with Judy to build the agenda for that meeting based on what we need to close business. There may be a few things that need to be voted, depending on what. So in my mind, it's sounding like it'll be a very short school committee meeting if there's voting. And of course, it could become a workshop and we don't vote in workshops. So we'll divide, we'll divide and then we'll go into a school committee meeting briefly and then do a workshop for as long as we need to. Okay? And did I hear 9 AM?
9 AM.
Okay, so I built those agendas, okay?
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to eight four.
Okay, so this is the one that we added. And it wasn't on the original agenda, because I needed to get the pre-K screening. So we're finally there. And it was said publicly and at the very beginning of the budget process as well, not the beginning, but as soon as we recognized, that we needed to trim the budget to get us down to a reasonable budget increase. And our class sizes were just really not impacted, except kindergarten. Kindergarten was the place where we were like, well, let's do a wait and see. And we said, the school committee committed to, if the numbers grow, we will address that. And the reason it wasn't on the agenda is we needed to have screening today. So I met with Judy and I came back and I checked on screening. And it was almost over. I needed to kind of wait till the end. Did everybody show up?
Mm-hmm.
What are our real numbers? Not what, what is on a piece of paper that somebody called of interest? Because that's always that mystery number. I know, I know of a friend who has a friend who has a kid that, and they get added. And I'm like, we can't do that. We can't base budgets on talking to your friends. We need data. So the data today is, is great. So I called Judy back up and I said, I've gone back and, you know, we're for sure in kindergarten. 22 students, and that's without anybody moving to town. Okay, so we're in May now and I get, we got 22. We, we have another individual in that would be 23 that I discovered today that is of kindergarten age, but it's the parents wish that that individual child be put in pre-K, and we may have room. Here's my however, we got extensions from the state to include two more children in our pre-K program. So we've already got an extension. This child's old enough to be in kindergarten. One of my concerns would be socially moving through the grades and also will be of age to be a compulsory student who's five years old. So you'd have, right out of the gate, starting pre-K with somebody who's already a compulsory student and nobody else is. Some turn five during the school year, not many, but this one does. So the, the data needs to suggest how does this individual screen? Where should this person be placed? Haven't made a decision. So it's going to be a minimum of 22. It'll be a maximum of 23 to this date. Probably going to be 23, but if the, if the screening says, no, you know, this child really needs pre-K, or as Sharon said, we could play up or down depending on what the child needs. It might be a recommendation to place in kindergarten, but maybe there's some times that this individual needs pre-K. That's just one child. So you're looking at 22 for sure, maybe 23. So talk to Judy, and I think she has some ideas on, I'll turn to Judy on what, what you might want to suggest to do.
We've always had a policy, as long as I've been on the school committee, that if kindergarten went beyond 20, we would have two teachers. And I think we should continue with that policy and ask the selectmen to put us on the next town meeting, which is coming up, I believe, in July, where we can have a warrant article to ask the town to approve us hiring another kindergarten teacher.
So not June 11th?
We can't. I checked on that, I can fill you in on that. Because going into the town meeting, we anticipated perhaps, we didn't put the kindergarten teacher in the budget, it was the right thing to do. We needed to wait and see. So I asked Jennifer, I said, boy, you know, if I know, and if it's the wish of the, of the committee to hire somebody, can I get it on the June? The answer is no, because it's, it's a closed vote. It's a absentee ballot, needs to be out for 30 or 45 days ahead of time. There was no way we were going to make this timeline, make decisions tonight.
Right.
So I asked her, well, when is the next available time to like, you know, add a teacher? And she said, there's going to be a special town meeting in July. So we'll walk on to that. If with a positive vote tonight, I'll reach out to her tomorrow and say, what do you have for a date now? How do you want this warrant article written?
What about pre-K? Because we decided to cap at 16, you said you got a waiver for two extra ones.
Right.
Was that what the number showed today?
I didn't do a pre-K count, but I'm under the understanding that it could actually be, we could actually, we have up to 18, and we may be at 17.
Okay.
It swings on what staff members get, to be honest with you, where we're going with that.
Right, so we should be okay on pre-K?
We should be okay, but then again, if somebody moves in and I have a spot, that's great. If this individual moves into kindergarten and doesn't take a spot, that's great. So there's some strategic pieces here. If three kids move in, then we need to have a, yeah, okay. Because at that point, we've gone beyond the extension agenda.
Okay, great.
John, I have a question about that with the pre-K, because I know nothing about this. If, if a, a new pre-K kid moved into town, would that automatically bump the employee's child? It would bump?
I'm going to caution, I'm going to caution the answer, because we've never been down that road.
Okay.
In fairness to somebody who's made plans to have a child be somewhere and they made those decisions in the summertime, I think it deserves a conversation.
Sure.
And I think it depends, I think a lot of that depends on the situation and who it is and what's going on at that time. It is a good question, but we've never crossed that bridge, Terri, so.
And she was, and she was on the committee. She was, she was on the committee for planning for pre-K. So she knows what all the different ramifications are and what, you know. We'll have to figure out what our possibilities are when the time comes.
And just for everybody's knowledge base and anybody watching this, we have, this is not uncommon, but it doesn't happen all the time, is that we'll, how the budget, we'll look at our numbers and we're like, we need to hire a teacher. So we've done this before. We've had to respond to the numbers, because we're such a small district, that a couple of families can change everything. So we add, we don't reduce. If we have fewer kids, we don't let a teacher go in July. They're still coming back in August. But when we have more children, we have to respond to that. So the decision in May on the part of the board to add a teacher in May is, is a really good idea. And lastly, I will send out an email to staff as soon as the meeting's over, explaining if this positive vote goes through. It won't change our staffing any, because if you remember, I had somebody who I had to, we had to talk about letting go, and it had to have to do with performance, it had to do with budget. Well, I've had a couple of quiet conversations anticipating this to say, hold, I'll let you know tonight. So I can let the staff know that if it's a positive vote, that we're adding a kindergarten teacher and there will be no staffing changes. And it'll say, and Mr. Ward will meet with you or let you know who's teaching what. Because with the additional kindergarten teacher, it doesn't, it doesn't assume that anybody's going anywhere. How's that? Mr. Ward has a plan if you vote, and he will explain that to the staff. I'll let him know that somebody's going to be hired.
Okay, so I think what we need is a vote to, to have an article on the next town, special town meeting, to hire an additional kindergarten teacher.
So move?
One second there.
We moved and seconded. Any further discussion about it? All in favor?
Excellent.
All right, so now we will.
We need to go, we'll need to go to the conference room.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll move to the conference room for executive session.
I'll need a, just go real slow, because I'm writing this down for Jennifer. Somebody make the, yeah.
I move that we go into executive session as per one MRSA. Section 405.
I got that beat.
6A, personnel matters at 609.
Perfect.
Trying to go slow for you.
You did, you CJ.
And I'll second that.
I will look for a motion.
Yeah, we're good, we're.
Do you want us to vote going?
Yeah.
Judy to vote 5:00?
Yeah. All in favor?
Okay. So everybody other than the school committee and me, have a great night.